Whitmire.
Here.
White.
Here.
Moreland.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
We have a four.
Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is announcements. I have one really, really quick for myself to announce. My goal tonight is to blow through this meeting as expeditiously as possible because it's nice out in sunny. Whatever we can do to achieve those ends, I would appreciate it. Mr. Fox, do you have any announcements for anything?
Um, just two things. So I think as the commission is aware, commission agreement, they're gonna agree that resignation. So we have a vacancy, we're recruiting, there's a posting on city's website with a link for folks to download the application. So we encourage everybody to consider to apply. And we actually reached out today, Carla did, to our alternate commissioners, Greg Steinke and. And.
Judy.
Judy, awesome. Just kind of alert them to if I do, we have a vacancy now, maybe like me to call her in for air services upcoming. She should get back up to full staff. And so I know when we're back from Greg and he's able to do that. And I'm sure Judy will pitch in as well if we get past this time. So yeah, so that's the planning commissioner recruitment. And then the other announcement is that this is my last planning commission meeting. My last day will be July 30th. I will be fully retiring for good.
Well, we're sorry to see you go, but it was really great working with you.
Thank you.
Likewise, I agree. And thank you for, we've all learned a lot. I think we're gonna recommend to you. So appreciate it. And I know from experience, it takes too much to retire, so.
Actually, I already had to because I retired and then I went back to each room for the same city for almost nine months. So that's actually been recruited.
Three times. Okay. On the note of city vacancies, there is a flyer on the little thing there. And like, like Mr. Fox said, there's a blurb on the city website. So if anybody's online watching or listening to the recording later, and you need something to do on Wednesdays for free, you can come be a planning commissioner and you can get a giant binder of city ordinances to learn and memorize. It's a lot of fun. I'm really upselling it, but no, for real, it's a, it's a good volunteer experience and learn a lot, so. Any other announcements?
No.
Okay. We've got some minutes from the April 17th, 2024 meeting. It's a little while back because we already had a chance to review those for any errors or omissions or corrections.
I just noted one thing on page six of eight, line 42. I wonder if that eight is off by a year.
Oh, yeah. What do you mean? So yeah, that was in regards to some upcoming, at the time upcoming, planning commissioner training that would have occurred on, that did occur on May 6th. Interested commissioners were asked to let staff know by April 30th, 2025 if they were.
Yes, that is incorrect. Thank you for pitching us to the working on 2025 things.
Information about a new planning session or training together? And discover another one, you know?
No, I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything more about another section. The, my experience is that typically APA or chapter APA and DLCD seem to do like three of those a year. So I imagine there'll be another one coming up sometime in the fall, probably.
We might keep up with, with the city administrator or Carla on that. It's probably about a snow if we want. It's like an hour, hour and a half or so on Zoom.
Give me that more weeks' notice because last time I was going somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I'm pretty good. I got it if I'm six weeks or so in advance, but I haven't heard anything.
Are there any other corrections or notes on the minutes for the April 17th meeting? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move.
As corrected. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion to may be seconded. Any further discussion of the minutes? Colonel, take the roll.
Whitmire.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Moreland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We've got some public hearings. Do I have a script?
I don't have a script.
I don't have a script to memorize.
Let me, let me, I give the real question.
Okay, we will recess for a moment. Well, when we get my script to read so we don't have the. Government.
Teleprompter, please.
Yeah. Last thing we need is to have somebody getting hot water because we didn't run a meeting, right?
Put that in your teleprompter.
Yeah, let's not go there.
I'm just talking about the technology network from the 12th.
Yeah, yeah.
Once in a while is okay, but two or three in the same year?
Well, maybe sooner or later, though, just teleprompter on your retina or something.
The last of the four, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. I should keep a copy. Maybe I'll do that. Okay, we have, well, technically, kind of sort of three public hearings that are kind of rolled into one. So I'll read my script here. This is going to be regarding case file number two dash geo dash PC dash 24 and number three dash geo dash PC dash 24 and number four dash geo dash PC twenty, uh, dash 24. The following statement will apply to all public hearings heard at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section citations and criteria described by the depot based staff report or other criteria in the code the party believes to apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the state man use or appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. Procedures for the public hearings will be as follows. A, there will be a staff report. B, the applicant will present testimony. C, there will be testimony from those in favor of the application. D, there will be testimony from those in opposition to the application. E, there will be rebuttal from the applicant. F, I will then ask if there is anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony. G, if none, the public hearing will be closed. And H, finally, the commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. I would interject also in here, I would ask that the commission and the public, that we do abide by this routine here. That we do abide by this so we don't get mixed up and have testimony inappropriate times. I don't want to get in trouble. Okay, are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest or bias of commissioners regarding the hearing before us?
No.
CA?
No.
Okay. Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by, by other commissioners or by the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Kit, could you please proceed with the staff report?
Certainly. So as you mentioned, the item before, the report before this evening is one report dealing with three geologic hazard reports that are all related to lots in phase one of depot hills. So the initial application was a building permit application for lot eight. And the files that was filed back on May 1st, the project applicant is momentous size construction, which is affiliated with the project developer, which is hills of depot bay. The applicant was advised shortly after the submittal that the geological hazard report was required for lot eight. And this was submitted on May 17th. Momentous size, subsequently, they also applied for geo review for lot six and seven, and they're all adjacent to one another. And again, within phase one of depot hills, that was submitted early June. The residences on the three lots are essentially identical. The lot on, house on lot eight is basically a reverse floor plan of two houses that are being proposed on lot six and seven. So the applicant submitted reports and some additional information to address the soil conditions for all three lots, basically as one reporter once submitted. And this was forwarded to the city engineer for review. City engineer asked for some additional information related to those applications, yeah, that was on June 18th. And copy of that request, forwarded information is attached to tonight's report. Because of timing issues, the, the receipt of those comments on June 18th was, was, was just past the cutoff, the 30 days of fitness review cutoff for the application for lot eight. So that essentially meant that lot eight application was deemed complete automatically by, by date of, not, because we passed the deadline. So we really needed to get that application and pondering agenda moving forward so that we could get that decision for the planning commission within the timeline that's, that's stipulated in state law and ORS. So basically, and since all the report, what the report was being submitted was basically addressing all three lots, having cases, you'd make the most sense to go ahead and agenda all three items at once and move forward. So we have a conversation with the applicant, email back and forth, that we do that and we place the item on, all three items on tonight's agenda. Going with the understanding that, that the additional information needed by the, to the engineer would need to be submitted and reviewed in the application and then conceptually approved before tonight's meeting so that we would have a conceptual approval from the city engineer for the commission to review before it's a final action. Fortunately, there was not enough time for that to get done in time for the date of the cutoff that I needed to get the report finished. Although I understand that the applicant spoke to Chris earlier or yesterday. And I guess there's some additional geological investigations and stuff that's being done out there on lot six, still working on it right now to get that report back in. So, but as the cutoff for this evening's agenda, we didn't have that information before us. So the recommendation tonight is to continue the, this, these three public hearings to the next meeting. And we're hopeful, confident hopeful, I think, that we'll get the information from the applicant in the next week or so. And have an opportunity for the city engineer to review that and give us their final okay. And have that all packaged and ready to come back to the planning commission in their August 14th meeting.
Okay, got it. So as far, question for staff, as far as, do we go through testimony and rebuttal tonight and then just continue that on next time? Or do we not get that part?
I think we'll probably, at this point, it's better to just continue the matter without discussion this evening. I mean, certainly, the, the applicants, members of the applicants team are here this evening and, and you just want to call for any public testimony. That's, that's fine. I don't have a mail to present this evening. But then we would recommend that we, I'll be carrying over and not getting any more deliberations, just continue it to the August 14th.
Okay. Uh, does that conclude your staff?
That's the 20.
Okay, so we're waiting on paperwork. Is that like, oh, further working on paperwork?
More than just paperwork.
Um, well, yeah, if you'd like to present some testimony for the record, then we'll continue on next time. But if you're here and you'd like to chime in as a chance, otherwise we can just do it next time. Okay.
No, next to it?
Sure.
All right. Is Matt before me, Moreland, the project manager for depot hills? And yeah, obviously, this is due to, we're still gathering information from geological hazard. And I just want to update you guys on the original geological hazard report was expired. And the company that did that report didn't have the staff to be able to kind of update the report or come back and do that for the lot. So we hired another firm, earth engineers, who has, will be doing our phase two stuff as well as six, seven, eight. All the field work's been done. They came and did boring tests last Saturday. So they're, did a lap test on that as well. And they know all about our timeline to get this report while last and recommendations to us of what needs to be done. So we hope to have that hopefully within the next week or two. And I would say we know ACWK and AAS, and hopefully we can get that all, that before, uh, 1/31st and ready for next meeting, so.
And I'll be checking back. You've got AK, you've got Paul's email, AK, and that'll probably, feel free to go ahead and just send it, send it to me, but send it directly to Paul.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're making sure.
But I make sure they got it, but I'm just to get there, be done, so.
Okay.
That's about it.
Very good. We'll wait and see. Any other testimony in favor of the application? Okay, any testimony in opposition? And then we'll just move on. Hearing none. Let's keep this public hearing open until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on August 14th?
Fourteenth.
On August 14th?
Chair, I would ask that we get the reports as soon as you can, at least them, just inside the commission, so we look at it. If that's what they're doing.
The, well, the staff report will be, I mean, I think it'll be available on the normal, the normal schedule, it's the plan. One of the, probably won't, probably, but my plan is probably haven't done by the 31st, which is my last day, so.
Okay, those things, I'll just do it on an airplane and just some review.
Yeah.
Are you asking for the geo report or?
I'm the staff report.
Staff report.
Because the geo information will be in there. So that's, staff report's fine. Don't do any extra work because.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I want to be far bill.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're gonna cut this one off, this public hearing off right here. We continue on August 14th.
Does it have a motion back?
Yes.
So.
I'll send you that. Any further discussion on recessing this hearing until the next meeting? Colonel, would you please take the roll?
And who's second to take that motion? All right. White. White. Moreland.
Aye.
Sherman.
Aye.
Aye.
Whitmire.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, CA.
Yeah, I, sorry about that.
No, no problem. Technology. Okay. Apparently, that concludes our public hearings for the evening. So moving on then to unfinished business, we've got a note for DLCD guidance regarding Senate Bill 1537. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Yeah. Uh, yes, thank you. So as you recall, I think it was back in April, mid, almost very last year. That the staff presented an initial overview of Senate Bill 1537. And at that point, we've been advised by DLCD that they were working on some guidance documents, FHA, something along those lines that they were going to release this June. And it actually happened, I think, the same day of the last planning commission meeting, local, not later day, that's right. So, um, that document is, is attached to the report this evening. It addresses most of the provisions of SB 57, no, 1537. That will involve kind of a day to day land use planning activities and work in cities and counties. And I think a particular concern to this commission and type of many other jurisdictions are the mandatory adjustment provisions that will go into effect in January 2025 and eventually will get sunset seven years later in January 2032. So SB, as you may recall from our previous discussion, SB 1537 specifies conditions and timelines under which local governments must grant adjustments to existing land use regulations and design development standards for housing developments as they're forming. SB 15, 1537 requires local governments to grant up to 10 distinct adjustments to development standards, including setbacks, open space, landscape areas, electric partner requirements, lot sizes, dimensions, and design standards and guidelines. And so we just wanted to summarize a few of the points from the guidance document that we, it very effective important to consider for us how it appears that SB 1537 will be implemented starting after the first 30 years.
Do we even agree?
In, yeah. So it, it seems possible that the, that the mandatory adjustment standard may not apply to certain standards that are related directly to statewide land use planning goals. Some of these would include anything in the code related to national and aesthetic resources, goal five, natural hazards, goal seven, and coastal shoreline, goal 17. So there may be some development standards related to those particular statewide planning goals that will not be eligible for automatic or mandatory adjustments. And for instance, the goal, the coastal shoreline, goal 17, it's seen that probably requirements such as the area visual concern setback and coastal erosion setback was not the eligible for mandatory adjustment. Still kind of remains to be seen, but those are definitely related specifically to those statewide. Yeah, so coastal shoreline zone related, so it seems like properties within that narrow band along with left top and areas surrounding the harbor that are in coastal shoreline overlay may not, they may not qualify for some of these mandatory adjustments, at least the ones that relate specifically to standards that come out of coastal shoreline's goal. And the language of the code in the, in that chap, in that chapter of the zoning ordinance and any policies and procedures that come out of the comprehensive plan related to that goal.
So how, how sure are we on that particular?
Well, I mean, honestly, it's, I think we're just gonna have to see how it goes. I think that's gonna be the case. It's gonna be, we, you know, the city will interpret it as not applying and someone will probably interpret if they think it does and.
Yeah.
It won't be appealed one way or the other and the, and Luba and.
And what are the rules we have until some judge tells you?
Yeah, exactly. I think ultimately, a lot of this is probably going to be litigated because of the rule.
Well, I mean, the, the timber conservation zone, another one's affected.
Well, the timber conservation zone is not because it has to be a zone where residential use is allowed. And we don't allow it where residential use is.
So it's everything else.
Right, pretty much. So the zones where it doesn't apply are primarily zones around the harbor that are the marine dependent zone that don't allow housing. And the public facilities, which is an area like the, the state park facility with the well watch center, zone of public facilities. So, but mostly, anything else in zone R1 through R5, the C1 zone, the light industrial zone, those are all zones that allow residential use. And so, um, yeah.
And the, the planning community really does not affect that either.
No, it's planned, yeah, it's planned development specifically, typically applied to residential developments.
Right, but, but in areas where that does, that has been applied already, like Little Oak Cove.
Oh.
The adjustments don't.
Correct.
Do they? Or maybe we just say they do until we're told otherwise.
I think that may depend, but yeah.
It would be interesting, yeah, do these adjustments apply within an already established?
Well, like, the one up there, you know, the Little Oak Cove probably had a deal, but the one up there in northern town is still going on.
They still have a few phases left to.
Yeah.
Consider sometime in the.
So I, I think our position ought to be that, that the plan, the plan or the overlays apply over and above this, this rule until we're told otherwise because they're special. They're all, they're all special.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think probably, I think, yeah, I think we could argue that any, any existing plan development overlay that's predate, you know, January 1st, 25, when this goes to go back, should be honor, should, should take precedence over. But again.
Do we need to make that an official position or just go operate that way?
You know, I.
Can I make thumbs up?
I want thumbs up, yeah, we'll remember that because.
That's gonna be up to you folks and whoever might.
Good luck to the interim person.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's one of the issues is that it seems like there are some areas where it may not, may not be required to approve some. But otherwise, as I mentioned, it applies in all areas that are zoned for residential use, which covers most of the city. Um, there is a requirement that it applies to housing developments with a minimum net density of five dwelling units per acre. And it's a sliding scale of density based on populations of the smallest cities have the lowest density threshold of five per acre. And if you get larger cities, that is a higher figure. Unfortunately, the five dwelling units per acre covers basically most of the zones in the city. There might be some areas in the R1 zone that are larger lots that perhaps it wouldn't apply. But those are, that's gonna cover most of the redel, residential zones. And also the, the R1 or the C1 and the light industrial zones as well. You know, the affordability of proposed housing limits is not, it's not required. They were justified requesting adjustments. So an applicant only needs to show that the adjustments make housing development, quote unquote, feasible, that they quote unquote reduce the sale or rental price of dwelling units, or that they increase the number of dwelling units that would otherwise be allowed in an application. So if they're very low bar, I mean, there are other criteria as well that are more, that are higher bars where developers have to agree to satisfy a certain number of units that are, that are affordable to household at a, a certain percentage of median income, which is something that perhaps makes sense for a larger development. But I think what we're likely to see here is individual single family projects or very small, smaller, multi-family projects that are, that may come forward and be asking for these types of adjustments. And they don't need to, you know, are required to demonstrate that these are going to be capital A affordable type of, of units that are for households that are, that are most in need of that. Basically, to show that, that is, that they don't get the adjustments, their projects are in feasible form. So that's gonna be.
I mean, so that is a little bar, that is pretty, that's kind of a feeble, you know, yeah.
It's a very low bar.
It was written by developers, apparently.
Yeah, I think it was.
And in here, like the questions fall in thirteen in here, the GOFOs rule, the GOFOs rule, one of them explains what the GOFOs rule is. And that just says this bill allows applicants to change the GOFOs, not city. So there's, there's all sorts of hints in there in the will as well.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
Maybe we'll start seeing some interesting projects coming through here.
And yeah, you're well named. Another point, another genre to point out is that unless there is some type of discretionary approval that's involved with a housing development as defined, and that would be like a land division, which was discretionary or conditional use. Requests for mandatory adjustments will be processed as a limited land use decisions rather than variance. So the variance findings that the commission is familiar with in terms of hardship and, and those criteria will not apply. Limited land use process provides for a very streamlined, basically administrative reprocess with limited public notice and no public hearing requirement unless an appeal. So projects that qualify for some of these mandatory adjustments won't even make, it may not come to the planning commission unless they're appealed. And I think there are even limits on even the appeal. So it's not clear how many, the commission will review. But there, you know, there may well be instances where, there may well be instances where the staff, you know, believes that that certain aspects of a project, you know, don't qualify for the adjustments and a developer acting, usually they do. And then it's gonna be, that's the appeal process or what.
I have a kind of a tangent of a question regarding the appeal process for a limited land use decision. Does, which, if, if that was done administratively, you know, in, in your office or in city hall here, and then somebody appealed that, does that come to the planning commission or is that? Okay, because if, my understanding, if we get, one of our decisions gets appealed, like what for, you know, a prostitution public hearing, that bounces up to the city council.
Right.
Okay, so the limited land use thing would go to us from the planning commission for, for the deal with the council and then so on.
Yeah, so on and chain, right, okay. Yeah, so that's, it will be a different process that would not, and that would not involve the variance findings and the variance process. Each discrete adjustment to a development or design standard. Each discrete adjustment to a development or design standard is counted as one individual adjustment, even if, even if it applies to multiple components of multiple properties. So if a project consists of, I don't know, ten dwelling units and every one of the ten units has multiple setback very deviations, a setback deviation is one distinct component. So they could have for twenty different, you know, setbacks side, front, rear.
Yeah.
On ten different lots, and that's one. Case adjustment, so. So nine more that they can, you know, that they're gonna potentially ask for. So there's any number of things that can all be asked for as adjustments. I mean, that's kind of worst case, but.
Right.
I think what we're, we're, we're not always certain what this is gonna look like on January first, you know? But especially in some jurisdictions with larger developments proposed coming forward, they're gonna see a lot of that, you know, many, many, many adjustments being reviewed in this, some of these. And then I think this, I think this came up at the last discussion, I think somebody asked about whether we should be considering amending our zoning ordinance to adopt some of these standards and the recommendation from the EOCD is not to do that because as it's envisioned right now, this bill will sunset in seven years. So presumably in the end of seven years, the rules would go back to what they are now, so.
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't see a need for the city to adopt that unless we really, really like it by twenty, when it comes to do it something like that, but it would be redundant with the state law.
Yeah, and there, there may, there may be jurisdictions that have, where there would be, there would be more support for these types of wholesale changes to the process and, and maybe it makes sense for those jurisdictions to adopt or change to their ordinances to incorporate these formally potential, that I think at this point is. I would go with the EOCD's recommendation that we not change our, our processes to reflect these, unless, you know, who knows what the legislature might do in the next session or two, so. So that's kind of, that's in kind of an overview. I'm sure that my successor will keep you informed of additional changes in SB fifty seven or additional guidance from the EOCD as it comes forth, that'll be more information I'm sure coming forward as we get closer to the end of the year. And, yeah, hopefully if there is, when there, when there is another planning commissioner training opportunity comes up later in the year, I would expect that there'll be more focus on how this, how SB fifteen thirty-seven is going to be implemented and what the opportunities for.
And see how these sessions begin.
Yeah, oh definitely. I think there's, there's a lot of ambiguity about how this is gonna work and I think it is gonna be a lot of trial and error and serious.
So we only got two zones where we haven't actually applied these already in most cases, most of the applications we've seen so far in, like, R three, it's all like, wouldn't need any of these adjustments for the most part, but.
You hope not.
And we only got one planned community that's in process and they don't have any plans for any others and there's no room for any others.
Right.
So it's like, I don't know that this is gonna affect as much.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to say, I, I think, but because it can be, I mean, a housing development can be just one house or a lot, so I mean, if you're right, just somebody can come in and propose to tear down an existing house and, you know, stand at a point, just not paying him and say, I wanna put out, tear down a house.
It could turn into a lot.
Twenty-six units and, you know, with no parking and zero parking lot setbacks and, you know, ten feet over the height limit and, that's kind of a worst case, but that's a possibility.
Yeah, I understand. Well, I guess we'll see.
So.
It's built in the. Okay, does that conclude our report on?
Yes.
SB fifteen thirty-seven, okay. Moving on then, are there any other questions from commissioners on, on that? Okay, moving on to new business. We've got two case files that are somewhat related to each other and we'll present it as a single staff report. We've got case file number three dash C one dash P C dash twenty-four and number four dash C one dash P C dash twenty-four, applicant Paul Berger's P K P M holding LLC. This is not a formal public hearing, but Kit, would you please present your staff report on these case files?
Certainly. So in this case, the applicant has filed an application for two building permits for new construction in the C one zone, as I mentioned, they're called new construction in the C one zone, requires planning commissioner approval for building permits. And the request is to install two manufactured homes on a vacant lot, which is located at twenty-five Southwest Johnson Street, which is just across the street from us here. The property is on the C one, it measures roughly a hundred feet wide by ninety-three feet deep. There are currently no existing structures on the property, but what, it was once developed with a, the residence that was demolished, perhaps it would be over a decade ago, and was recently developed as a storage, some property that was removed by previous property owners. So the property consists of all or portions of three lots in block eight of the Breakers Editions of Steve O'Beige. The applicant proposes to segregate the existing tax lot for process within having a accessory office in two left tax lots. As far as I can tell, it would affect the, the tax amount and kind of the history and the way that tax lots are numbered, it appears that originally this property was two tax lots. Lot, what is the lot five portion was one tax lot and what is now the quarter lot three and four portions was another tax lot. At some point those were consolidated, potentially that consolidation would be undone for process that is subject to segregation. So again, one lot consisting of the lot five portion, which is the proposed unit one, and the other consisting of the portions of lots three and four, which is the proposed unit two, for the evening. Each single story home would include a one car garage and one driveway parking space.
Question?
Yes.
This may not be our argument, is, is that the, the remaining portions of lot three and four usable, or are they, or is it too small?
No, there is, no, no, because the, the remaining portions are, are already, were already taken by ODOT.
Oh, okay. Oh, so that's right away.
But yes, they're part of, they're part of the right away, so they're, they're portions of lots three and four, not a problem, portions were already taken. So there is an existing input wide easement that runs south to north through the center of the property to provide future access to the binding property to the north and so the site improvements that are being proposed as part of these two applications will not interfere with their approach upon that, at that easement area of that lot that the developer is developing in the future. So the C one zone does not specify any minimum required lot area width, depth, or setbacks. The C one does have a maximum building height of thirty-five feet and the table that's in your staff report is assuming the big step being the proposed setbacks and building heights for the two homes. The property is subject to the C one zone design standards and guidelines, which requires a five foot wide sidewalk along three, three frontages that are not about highway one oh one, and an eight foot wide sidewalk along highway one oh one frontages. The property has a hundred and six feet of frontage on Southwest Johnson Street and ninety-seven feet of frontage along Highway, Highway one oh one. The proposed development will be required to provide sidewalks along both of these three frontages and those sidewalks will be subject to review by ODOT, according to the ODOT final line, and by the city's public works department, where they are in the city's market, but the requirement is that the sidewalks will be provided as part of this proposal. Each residence provides two off-street parking spaces, one in the garage on the driveway and this meets the city standards for residential family residences and the residences also will comply with the siding standards that in the zoning ordinance related to manufactured homes. And then the tax lot segregation that creates the two separate building size will need to be completed before building permits are issued for the placement of the home. So maybe each home is on its own tax lot. Staff members at the record and findings, it's reflected in the report this evening to support your conclusion that the site is suitable for replacement of two manufactured homes and that the proposed homes are consistent with all the applicable standards that were set forth in the Steve O'Beige zoning ordinance and therefore staff recommends that the planning commissioner approved the requested building permits, case file number three C one P C twenty-four for unit one and number four C one P C twenty-four for unit two, subject to the conditions listed in tonight's report. That concludes my presentation. I believe Mr. Berger is on his own.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions from commissioners to, regarding the staff report? CA, you got any questions for Kit?
I have none, nope.
All right.
I have a question about the sidewalks. It's pretty clear from your report that prior to the permit being, building permit being issued, that they have to have an agreement with ODOT, for example, for the one oh one sidewalk. And then it has to be completed before occupancy.
Yes.
So I just wonder, like, sometimes those ODOT requirements can be pretty significant in retaining walls and different things. I just wonder how much of an obstacle that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Expensewise.
I, I don't know, there's definitely a great difference there. I mean, I think we would anticipate that the, the sidewalk, you know, the, the, how the one sidewalk is going to be with an ODOT right away, I would think it's gonna be in the lower, the, the flat part closer to the, the road, just the pavement, if you will, then rather than a slope area. About where it makes, there is definitely a slope that comes up to where Johnson Street currently ends and there'll need to be some type of transition grade elevation change there up to Johnson Street. Part of that will be an ODOT right away, part of that will be city right away, so it'll need to be some coordination of the plans to make sure that the, that junction, that junction, you know, makes the requirements for both to be.
Because there's not really any other sidewalks in that area.
No, no, this is, to my knowledge, this is, I believe, the first application south of the bridge in the C one zone that's been subject to the C one design guidelines, the few that we've seen so far, according to the planning commissioner, all north of the bridge.
And so typically, does ODOT bear any of those costs or does the builder bear all the costs that ODOT has, their requirements?
ODOT is, is the permitting authority.
But they don't pay construction, they don't pay.
I'll be no.
All right, any other questions on the staff report? All righty, if the applicant is online, would like to speak in, on behalf of their application, Paul, if you're interested, you can, at your time.
Sure, thank you, any, yeah, okay?
Yes, trying to hear you.
Right, yeah, just, my name's Paul Berger, applicant and owner and, yeah, just to say thanks to Kit for helping us with the application and, yeah, we're available for any questions and, yeah, we look forward to bringing some nice affordable homes in there for, for sale.
I, I do have a question for you, Paul, if you have mine. In the, in the staff report, we just heard there was some mention, there, there may possibly have been some existing building or house or structure there at some point in the past that's long since demolished. Are you, are you familiar with that at all? Do you know anything about, was there a previous building there?
Yeah, I noticed that on a previous historical Google map view, I saw a home there and, and Kit did actually mention it. There's no evidence of it there besides maybe some previous water connection, but, yeah, we don't know of any, anything else besides that.
Okay, the only reason I was asking was because that's what I was thinking about, was any existing utility, you know, underground stuff would, of course, as you proceed, I'm sure you'll be finding texturating and finding things like that, but, just in case, so hopefully there's no live super mains or something under there.
Yeah, no, we'll be aware of it and, but, yeah, we're not expecting any major issues.
Okay, great. Any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? I'm not hearing anybody else. All right. Well, thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the application online? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody wish to speak on this subject at all? Okay. Where do we go from here? If we just consider it and go for it.
Just the deliberation of the motion, the motion, the deliberation motion.
All right. Well, not hearing any other public testimony, we'll go into commission deliberations on the application. Thank you for your testimony. Have they got any, anyone wanna chime in on this?
Seems like a complete reasonable application.
Sure does, yeah.
I mean, fuck the looking sidewalk, I guess, though.
Yeah.
It'll be, well, hopefully it'll be the first sidewalk of many in town here as, as applications come.
No, I, you know, coming on the south part of that, all those buildings already there, so unless somebody wants to tear one down and build something new.
Yeah.
They're not gonna hear about it, so.
Well, a piecemeal sidewalk, but if somebody someday does, then a piecemeal sidewalk.
And the other one goes along the base of Briscoe Street, so I don't know if there's any room to build anything there. I'm, I'm largely with that, so unless the city wants to pull one in, but I doubt that will happen.
Well, that easement in the middle, looks like it's not getting approached on at all and it's beating to that otherwise locked off property further in, is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding?
I didn't see that.
Which one?
Yes, it's.
Oh, that lot two?
I think that's. Yes, it's, it's the one, it's the lot to the north that identifies as being a portion of lot two and that's, that's the property in which the easement is in favor of. Because I think that that, it appears that that lot two portion, even though it does a button, highway one oh one right away, I think because of the grade difference, it's effectively land lot.
Why wouldn't that easement come from Briscoe Street, not Johnson Street?
That I don't know, it's an existing easement.
Yeah, I'm not sure who makes up the easements or where they came from, but, but, I mean, it's there.
Yeah.
Okay, any other commission deliberations? Anybody wanna move the application?
I believe that we approve this application as presented.
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Greg, would you please take your role?
Morland?
Aye.
Sherman?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Okay, then motion carries. Thank you to the applicant and good luck on the project. Okay, moving on, that was our last business, okay. Any public comments or items not on the agenda? Anybody online which to speak about or make any public comments? I'd ask if there's anybody here that would like to, but there's nobody here. All right, moving on then to city council liaison report, July is me and next month will be Ruth. I'll report a little bit, we had a, I've been to both city council meetings so far in July. First one was on, I don't remember, July first or something like that, and then the other one was last night, so. I learned that I need to check my city email more frequently because I went like two weeks without knowing that Mr. Fox was, was resigning to post until I was sitting here at city council all happy as a clam and, and then they blessed me with that, oh, that's news to me, I should check my email more often, sorry. But, yeah, so what I understood from city council is the, their intent, they had discussions on, on city planning services going forward and my understanding was that they, for the interim period, when Mr. Fox, after his last day and through until they can get another full-time or part-time or whatever staff person to do the planning services, we're gonna, the city's gonna contract with the, what was it? Oregon, Oregon State West Council of Government, yeah, to, for city planning. Oregon, Oregon State West, Council of Government, yeah, to for city planning services so that we will, I I I don't remember if I mentioned it, I thought it, but I don't remember if I said it to the council that I don't want to even attempt to do a public hearing here without city staff or legal representation present. So I think they they understand that and they're not gonna do that to us, so we will have, we will have somebody interim or full-time, whatever, however it pans out, we'll have a staff person available for consultation and reporting and stuff like that, so. It won't be Kit Fox, but it'll be somebody. So, but yeah, I did hear last night that there is one application that was received as of like yesterday or something like that, so they've got one application in for the city planner position and the, you know, posting is still active, I understand, so. Uh, let's see where that goes, and of course, we also know that Mr. Embry resigned his position. So we are down to four planning commissioners, a corner requirement is three, so I think Scott, you said you had a trip coming up soon, seeing, we'll be on a plane for our next meeting. So as long as Ruth and myself and CA make it to the next one, we'll have a forum at least, you gonna make it to the next meeting, CA?
I'll be there.
Awesome.
Yeah, I was looking at the possibility of driving Brooke to the, I'll be in the airplane, so.
Yeah.
We don't know about that yet.
Um, let's see, who else?
Have they had any discussion about this Senate bill fifteen thirty seven, the city council, the?
Not at the two meetings I attended, but I believe they have had some discussions about it, that's on one or what else was there? I took notes. Oh, and I did, I did stress to, anyway, after, at the first meeting in July that I attended and I was broadsided by our city planner resignation due to my own not checking my email. I did sit in the back and ruin it for a little while and I I came up and made a public comment at the end of the meeting and I did suggest to the city council that, you know, what I find that I hopefully rest of the commissioners agree with, that the staff report and input is tremendously valuable and an analysis especially of the case files, so whoever we get coming along, we're gonna be relying on them.
We have to memorize those same ordinance if we didn't have that staff report.
Exactly, and I don't, it paid a whole lot to be sitting here, so.
Well, yeah, no, that's, that's extremely valuable.
Yeah, so I did stress that to them and I think city council's working on it and they understand what what the needs are, so. We may have, I was invited to potentially participate in an interview process if that goes along, I haven't said yes or no or anything to that, but I never bring that up under, later on under planning commissioner concerns. If anybody, if they do invite me to come sit in through interviews with any new city planner people. As chair of the commission, I'd like to solicit the input of all the other commissioners as well for anything that we'd like to address. Uh, I think that's all I've got for liaison report for the month. And Ruth, it's your month next month, but I might see you there a couple of them, cause I'll be attending.
Oh, wow.
And just maybe the August sixth meeting has been canceled, so there's only one.
Oh, okay.
Because it's national night out, so at this point, there's only one regularly scheduled meeting on August.
So no August sixth, then the next one would be Tuesday.
August twenty, yeah.
Twenty, okay.
Okay. Moving on then to city planner and city administrator such reporter reports, are there any reports? Do you have any reports?
No, everyone, the the normal activity report is in your your packet this evening. A lot of building permit applications that booked in June and and so far in July, a lot of stuff. Trying to get their permit applications and permits pulled before we head into the rainy season. The, so definitely, definitely busy, and a few things just been in the last few days that are going to be fairly substantial progress over the coming time, hopefully in the next few months. Your next meeting in August, you will be seeing those three geology reports come back. So I'll read them this evening, those will be coming back to continue your public hearings. Your other scheduled public hearing in August is going to be the phase two preliminary plan for Devo Hills. Phase two, so you just reviewed, well watched phase two down at the bottom of the hill. And now Devo Hills, phase two up top of the hill is coming forward, and that will be on public hearings for your August fourteen agenda. Um, that's the only thing I know at that, I'm aware of at this point, everything on on that agenda. And so my plan is to spend the next couple of weeks working on those reports, trying to get those done before my last day and as well as working on other outstanding building permit stuff that's on my desk right now. But I will at least have those couple of reports before you for the the August meeting. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly who God flies will be sitting in this seat. Probably here, probably. But somebody will be sitting here, whether it's a, which were person or recorder, I don't know, but there will be something, there'll be something, there'll be a meeting on the fourteenth, there'll be a ton of agenda and.
We'll handle it.
Go ahead with it, I know it too. Yeah, so then the other thing is that are so obviously the the phase two, well, Devo Hills will be moving forward. Um, so a lot of things just to be aware of that are likely to be coming back to the commission in the coming months. Cedar Hills, phase two, we call Cedar Hills and Scott, you may not be familiar with the subdivision of Winchell.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so
I remember that, okay.
Phase one, Cedar Hills, came before the commission almost two years ago.
Yeah.
And that was an initial phase of seven lots right along Winchell. But then behind those lots, there's another old cul-de-sac and another I can't remember, sixteen lots, I think that's behind those. Sarah, and so that, phase two is gonna be coming forward, their their deadline to submit phase two is coming up at the end of August, so we've already had some conversations with them, they're getting their information together to submit formally. But I expect to validate coming before the commission sometime in the early fall to to review that, and their proposals and modifications to the layout compared to what was originally approved in the tender, so we'll be looking at those changes and system people conditions that were about to back in when that.
Changes to the original tentative phase two, because phase one, I presume is.
Well, actually, there's also, I mean, there's also some issues with changes that are back phase one, well, because of the way they're gonna change the access to.
Where in which will they gonna be, is this new development?
I'm sorry.
Where on which was this development?
It's, um, if you know where the anchor states subdivision is, it's on Winchell between basically between Bayview and Ainsley.
Okay.
On the north side of Winchell. And there's currently, I think they've just completed the first four homes in the, in that phase one, they've just actually submitted applications for two more homes in phase one, which we just approved. But then there's three more lots in phase one, like phase on to Winchell, and there's a bunch more lots behind those, and it's that large kind of wooded area, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big dead spot in the middle.
Yes, so, so that's gonna be coming forward. Uh, another thing to be, keep your eyes open for is the project down here on Shell Avenue. You'll recall that there was, you approved a building permit for new construction in the light industrial zone about a year ago. Uh, and that was for eighteen units townhomes that are, that are actually being, well, six have been built and completed now and those are being rented as tourist combinations. We anticipate that's what the other twelve minutes and that, that have been approved will also be used for, but they haven't, they haven't pulled apartments for those yet. But the developer has decided now that they wish to subdivide that property, so the intent is now rather than those eighteen units just being all under this common ownership of one entity that manages and owns them, they wish to subdivide, create lots under each of those townhomes, so they're gonna be sold. Uh, and they also want to add more units, so it's looking like eight, twelve more townhomes further down the slope, closer to the harbor. So I just got the subdivision application for that yesterday, I haven't really had a chance to review it yet, but that will be coming back to the planning commission. That whole property, that, that or that, the double development, that's all of the light industrial, that's all light industrial. All the way into the the parking lot, which is the city's property and that's, that's marine what is that key?
Marine, marine?
Land marine, land marine directly. So, yeah, so look forward to that subdivision application and related entitlements for the additional townhome minutes that they're proposing forward.
Means that it's gonna be very busy.
They have, they have approval right now for eighteen units and I think they're proposing eight to twelve more.
Almost thirty.
Thirty, I think, somewhere twenty-eight to thirty. And they, and they will be, because of the subdivision application, one of the, one of their requirements is that they, they do need to do prepare a recent traffic impact letter, depending on how many trips you're there.
Hopefully they did it for getting referred and moved to, yeah, they don't have to.
Well, we're, now, the application's been submitted, so we, the city has a hundred and twenty days to review it as a regular decision, so city and the applicant, which we do extend that deadline, we, we, it's July now, so we're gonna be making a decision on that subdivision application by November, November, yeah, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's pull off on discussing pending pending cases until we get to them, but yeah.
But I just wanted to go with the ten ahead of the couple of major things that.
On a related note, would it be appropriate for me, in reviewing the agenda for August, to send those to you?
I think direct any, direct any correspondence to staff and 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 staff can disseminate, cause I think if I think the issue comes down to like public meeting law, if a bunch of us are communicating outside of the, all that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Safe is just to send it to Kit or Carla and they can pass it along if needed, yeah, we don't wanna have but and can they wish to seriate?
Most serializing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and mostly questions I wanna have answered in the record.
Okay, that's it, that's it on that, okay, I'm the planning commissioner concerns, I'm gonna start on this one. So like I said, I would like to solicit the input of of the other commissioners here on if we have any particular points or considerations we would, we would like to, you know, pass along to city council for hiring a new city planner, whether, I don't know what the employment status can be, full-time or part-time, I don't know what what they're gonna land on, but that's the, you know, individual that's gonna be helping us out the most, us, you know, telling planning commissioners need to, need to guide, and so if anybody's got any input or things that you might find valuable for certain employee. Yeah, what do we got, if anything?
So I would be curious, just as an interview question perhaps, is like what do they how do they think Senate bill fifteen thirty seven is gonna affect the process here and how is it gonna affect the planning commission job? And the city planner job? So just give an idea how experienced and informed they are and.
What do you anticipate about this be fifteen thirty seven? And how it might impact city planner and commission job?
Cause this is potentially huge, potentially huge for.
Worst cases are in this move.
Say that?
Worst cases are in this move.
Yeah.
Yeah, like what do we do, nervous stuff or anything?
First, I'm curious how other cities, like this is a site, how, not with your interview question, how other cities are gonna approach this?
I think that's what what Kit was referring, alluding to earlier is that it's gonna be a big trial and error thing for a while. Parts will be busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
CA, do you have anything you'd like to put into consideration for city planner interview or anything like that?
I don't, I just think it's a loss to have Kit leave and and miss you, you put in a lot of good work there and the staff reports are very thorough and thoughtful, so I don't have any, any advice for finding somebody to replace you, being part-time, I think you did a great job, Kit. And we'll miss you and I just wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you, second that.
Would say that I'd like to see those reports become our standard, those are expectations.
Yeah, I don't know what we would do without without thorough staff reports, I mean, you know, we're volunteers and we're crunching through all the ordinances and city codes and stuff, bumbling through.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a lot of work kind of facing everything, but replicating the relevant ordinances and is, it's gonna be useful, cause otherwise we'd be digging through that thing by ourselves.
Yep.
I do know that the, the the application forums are asking for a writing sample, so I have to, that is part of what is being considered as part of the.
Yeah, you can actually go on to the website and see the recruitment on this.
Okay. I'm gonna add my little question, this, I mean, obviously a new hire is gonna have to get familiar with with her. It takes some time to get familiar with all our codes and ordinances, but I'm gonna bring that up, cause you do a notion right there, there's not a whole lot of municipalities in Oregon that have, other than on the coast here, of course, that have, that have that kind of unique area and zone, so I'm gonna make a note about that familiarity with coastal with the zone. Okay, well, if anybody's got anything else that comes to mind, please let, please email that to Carla and she can pass it on to me or or city staff as appropriate, whoever winds up interviewing a new employee, which will be probably city council or.
Yeah, just to kind of, just a little heads up on the interview schedule, right now in that recruitment, obviously, we are letting folks know that we are looking at doing interviewing that week of August the fifth for any applicants that we have received.
Okay.
Applicants that we've seen at that point, so again, past practice has been that we do let applicants see the questions, so that's typically written up prior to that, so the sooner the better, if you have questions that you would like to have included in the packet, that would be great.
Okay.
Oh, is that a standard of practice? I have never heard of that.
It's been here lately, I'll say lately.
Yeah, I was, I mean, yeah, but I, but I applied for the contract, I was provided with the questions in advance.
Well, let him start asking for that. There you go.
Yeah, it'll be nice. Okay, all right, that's all I had for planning commissioner concerns, anybody else wanna jump in, CA, Scott, Ruth?
I'm good.
You're good, okay, well, I appreciate all that because it's nice and sunny still and making it warm. So, final call for anything? Nothing, all right, we will declare this meeting adjourned until the next meeting is scheduled.